Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do the introduction to the remote meeting. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency seen at Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, a town in Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends a requirement for the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Board of Selectmen Interview Committee to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Public's encouraged to follow along, use it to post an agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. We will not be noting otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view a live stream can do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. At this time, I just want to confirm that the members of the board can communicate and hear us. So, Tim Kalin?
Present.
And Leslie Rutan?
Present.
Excellent. I don't think there's any need to go through the business ground rule because there's no other presenters, and there is no public comment, so we don't need to go through that as well. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chief.
Excellent, thank you. The first order is to accept the meeting minutes of September 14, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept the interview meeting minutes from September 14.
And I second that motion. Is there any discussion at all, Tim?
Nope, no discussion.
Awesome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Leslie, aye. Okay. Excellent. So, we will begin with our first applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Are we going to be bringing in Jean Cahill?
Hi, Jean, can you hear us?
Hi, Jean.
Hi, Jean.
Hi, how are you? Leslie Rutan?
Tim Kalin.
Or the selectmen? How are you?
Great.
Good? Okay. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Yeah, did you have technical problems, or were we just starting a few minutes late?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
So, we received your application to serve on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. So, what we want to do is do a 10-minute interview and discuss you, and your interests, and your application, and how you feel that you could contribute to this type of committee. And so, I think the first thing we'll start off with is asking you to talk a little bit about yourself and why you have applied, and what you would have to offer.
Great. I applied because I feel this is a really important effort, and I wanted to see it succeed. I was very, I was very happy to hear Tim Kalin's presentation to the selectmen on how we respond as a town, and it was exactly what I had hoped would happen. I found myself questioning in the aftermath of the events of May, just how do we respond? And all that came to mind was to ask a bunch of questions. You know, what are we doing here? What's our power and our responsibility at this time? And so, I and a few other people started just a Google sheet of questions and kind of took down notes from different events I attended related to Black Lives Matter to just, you know, what are, what are our communities about, and what, what, how, as a society, do we respond to this concern? We've had all our lives. I grew up very aware of racism, and I mostly lived in white enclaves, but I did have a diverse kindergarten, and I remember feeling very, very deeply touched by the fact that the kids in my kindergarten, all who were black, all lived on the street to the dump. That was a dirt road and an open burning dump, and that was the, that was the hell of their lives. And I felt at that time like there's such a division here, you know, and how do I, how do I bridge that decision as a five-year-old, much less, you know, throughout our lives? I think we've kind of come upon that stark realization of the world is not a fair place, and it's divided on the lines that really challenged us to be able to do anything about it.
Could you discuss a little bit of your background that would be applicable to this particular position?
You know, I don't really have direct experience in, other than, you know, personal concern, I would say. I did run for office, and I encountered most of the people who, you know, I reached out to, to talk to voters, or who reached out to me. This past year, we're very concerned with how the police shift, build, and reform bill, and we had a lot of really interesting conversations about that. And what, what I found through that process was people were coming at me really strongly, heated, angry, you know, why, why are we doing this? Why are we holding our police to account here? This doesn't happen here in Massachusetts. It doesn't happen in our communities. And so, I was really challenged to kind of bridge that divide, and I found the conversations I had with people were very respectful, very stimulating. I think, you know, I could say that, you know, I'm glad that our State House approved a police officer standard of training, and, you know, I understand how difficult qualified immunity is, but like, let's talk about it was kind of where I felt called to reach in, to understand better their perspective. And I think that's kind of indicative of my personality. I'm a questioner, and so, that's what I would bring, I think, mostly to this committee.
Well, wouldn't you say there'd be some organizational skills that you might have? Because I consider this committee, you know, is going to go through a phase of information gathering and reaching out to different towns, different constituents, maybe different demographics, kind of thing. What would you feel you would be able to add to that?
I do feel like, you know, I have done a bit of organizing in town. I organized some community dialogues just to bridge the political divide, you know, that I thought was really getting to the point where we couldn't talk, you know, we couldn't talk to family, we couldn't talk to neighbors with whom we disagreed on issues. So, in acknowledgement of that, in 2019, I worked with the library to start a film and discussion series, and some on topics that were quite, you know, documentary-type movies, as well as just joyous movies, things for kids, that kind of thing. And it was just, you know, it was just kind of that instinct, I think, to reach in and lean in a little bit to difficult conversations. So, that's one thing, you know, I reach out to people through social media, you know, try to organize events, you know, through a library and through different groups, just to kind of meet the needs of where are we right now? What do we need? What's our, you know, what's, what's going to help people at this time? And how do we cross partisan divides? And I think, you know, this issue can get very weaponized through partisan kinds of divides, and I'd love to see it be above that.
Can I ask one question, Leslie?
Absolutely.
Hi, Jean, how you doing?
Good, Tim, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. This is, you know, as you know, it's a, it's a new committee, so I think one of the challenges with the committee is, is we don't have any road to follow. There's no framework in place for this committee, and that's something that as this committee begins to go through this process, we're gonna have to define our own, our own path in a way. So, I just wanted to ask you about that and see how comfortable you are with that, and it's gonna require some, you know, flexibility by people and some, some, you know, it's gonna be a much more team-oriented effort, I think, than, than, you know, I don't want to say the other boards aren't, but the other boards are much more defined, so, you know, just, I just wanted to ask the candidates to see how comfortable they are with that and, and what they feel they can contribute to that sort of entrepreneurial, may not be the right word, but entrepreneurial kind of board or committee.
I think that's part of what attracted me to this was, I didn't know, and I guess your question has answered one of my questions, which is this really just focused on town, municipal operations, and how we operate and how we hire, and, or, you know, I'm more interested, I think, in the community level of how our community is structured, what works for people, what doesn't. Are we welcoming? Are we recognizing barriers to people entering our community, passing through our community, patronizing our businesses, attending our schools? So, you know, I guess that is somewhat of my interest and a strength that I bring is in kind of the, that attempt, that ability to brainstorm with people and bring together, define a scope. And I really love working with a group of really committed, really, you know, smart, energized people, and, you know, this is one of many things I care deeply about and would, would be really happy to help our community work on.
One thing I will say, Jean, I want to thank you for this, is all the work that you did for the ban of bags, the plastic ban, and I think that's a good example of something that you organized so that it was a cohesive and coherent project that could be presented at town meeting, and it's also a good example of the fact that you, or your ability to work with younger people and on something that, that affected and had an impact on the entire community. So, I just want to point that out, and I want to thank you for your work on that.
Also, it was, a big part of that was working with the town, working with Fred Litchfield in particular, because, you know, he and Casey Mellon really took what was a citizens' initiative and said, we want this, if this passes, we want to make sure that this is a viable bylaw and that it comports with our other regulations. And so, you know, in large measure, they met the citizens and, you know, made that effort succeed, and that was part of, I think, where youth and adults worked well together is that we recognized it to be a very strong and enforceable and coherent proposition that we were bringing to town.
It was excellent. It was excellent.
It was fun, too.
Yeah, yeah. Tell you what, it was great. Tim, are there some details, maybe just in summary, as far as what you think will be a meeting schedule, or frequency of meetings, day of meetings, anything like that?
I don't know what day yet. That's still stuff that I, you know, that we need to work out with Town Hall and making sure that we have somebody from Town Hall that can help facilitate the Zoom meetings, notes, those sorts of things. That's, that's still part of the process of getting this committee up and going. My, my guess is that we'll probably meet once to twice a month, depending on what we uncover as we go through this process. I think it's really going to be dictated by what needs to be done and how deep we want to go as, as a committee. It's, I think that's, that, again, we don't have a framework to follow right now, so, so, minimum once a month, my guess is probably, that will expand to twice a month, but again, we'll, we'll see how that goes.
And I guess one, one last question I have, too, is ultimately, what would you like to see accomplished by this committee, Jean?
I think that's a little bit open-ended, too. I mean, I wouldn't want to say, you know, I want these particular outcomes as much as, I guess, I'm more process-oriented as to, you know, what might we, what might we build in the process of asking questions, and I would love to see people feel like they could come to us in confidence and say, I've had some problems here, I, you know, I have experienced discrimination, or this is what it, this is how it does roll out, because I think it's with, it's, it's within every one of us, it's within our potential to, to create a hurt in somebody else without meaning to, and I think just to educate ourselves. And, and I would say, you know, in terms of who gets elected on the committee, I would be so happy to see people of color, people, you know, from minority groups be appointed, so please don't at all hesitate to decline my offer, but I am an ally, so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to serve in whatever way.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll definitely submit questions to the committee, if not on the committee.
Yeah, that's gonna be a very important part, is to make sure that we have a, a very diverse perspective.
Absolutely. Do you have any other questions before we end the interview? We have a, we have a few tonight, so we want to try and keep on schedule. It's fun to chat, don't get me wrong.
It looks like you've got a great slate of people who you're interviewing, and, and I'm just so excited to see people in the community get it behind us and excited about it. So, I would just say, no, at this point, I don't have further questions.
Okay.
Great.
As long as you feel satisfied in terms of what you have needed to know about this committee.
Yes, yes, you know, from watching some of the board meetings, I've gotten a sense of kind of how it came, came out, and I'm just so excited that it's being put together, so, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Jean.
Yes, nice to meet you both.
Thank you. Take care, Jean, thank you.
I got Ms. Schmidt and Mr. George Isabrinkle. I have them both in a waiting room. I'll let Ms. Schmidt in first.
Okay, you're running a little behind. Let's try, we'll try and keep it to 10 minutes. I know people are waiting, and I don't like that, keep them waiting, so, we'll bring in Hilaria Schmidt.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, Hilaria.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Good. Thanks for, thanks for applying.
My pleasure.
We're, we're, we're very excited that we got the, the number of applications that we did. I think that's, that's very encouraging. Oh, thank you, thank you for applying. You know, as, as I was saying in some of the, the board meetings, the, the DNI committee will, will, you know, take a look at what's going on around town in various departments, and also in the community, to see areas that we, we can make some improvements, not set out to institute policy changes or radically change how we define positions and hiring practices, really about make a recommendation so that, that everybody is, is aware of places where they can improve. Before we get into asking you some questions, did you have any questions about the committee or what the process will look like?
Well, I saw that certain town committees will automatically be represented on, on this new committee.
Yes.
And then, there will be five more, I think, from the community, is that correct?
Yeah. Yep.
Well, since it's a brand-new committee, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, that's part of the, the challenge with this committee is, is there isn't any path to follow, there isn't any historical framework for the committee to, to go forward on.
Which is a good thing, too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can certainly look at it, you know, it's, it's, I think that's gonna be an important part of the committee is, is making sure that the, the committee members can, can work cohesively as a team and are comfortable with some flexibility as we go through this process, because I think we're all gonna be learning as we go. Are you comfortable being on a committee that works in that kind of entrepreneurial space?
Meaning flexible and?
Yeah, yeah, kind of figuring out things as we go along and?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not known to be very wedded to procedures or, you know, the way things have always been or anything like that. I'm, I'm more, tend to think more outside the box, so I think I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, that's great. Did you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to apply?
Sure. I mean, I'm sure you, you read my resume. I, I'm originally from Germany, but grew up internationally because of my father's profession, and I've lived in Northville for five and a half years, but lived in the US before, growing up, and I haven't been involved in any particular town committee or anything, but when this, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement became more pertinent this year, and there were protests here in Northborough, and I was just so impressed by the young people and the way that they're taking the lead on this, and then, I was one of the people who had contacted your board, asking, you know, what, what are you doing? And I was very pleased to hear that you, you'd started talking about it, and so, then I thought, then I should at least offer to be part of that committee. I do think I have a lot to offer, but I also, I'm glad to hear you have a lot of applications, and obviously, I'm a white person, you know, I, I have privilege, I don't experience discrimination the way that people of color do in our community, or people from other ethnic backgrounds, who can't see that I'm German, you know, I don't look different, so I would much rather see other people that have experienced discrimination be part of this committee. So, it's kind, you know, I meant, I would love to work on it, but I would also much rather see someone else work on it who could speak from their own experience, where I come at it more from a theoretical framework, maybe with my reading and studying about racial justice, which is of value, too, I'm sure. And also, my concern is always, do voices that, you know, mention things that are difficult, do they get silenced because we don't want to hear what they have to say? And that's often the case when people talk about having been discriminated against, then white people will say, well, that has nothing to do with race, and I will always be an ally and say, actually, it does. If the person who is experiencing it tells us that's what it was about, then we have to believe them. And so, that's what I would see as my role on the committee, is to uplift those voices and support them, because they get, they get silenced plenty in our society as a whole. And, you know, I, like I said, I have a lot of connections to the community that, and I have, you know, organizational skills, and I get things done. I mean, I'm not known to be someone who serves on a committee, and, you know, that's all I do. I, if I say I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it, and I'll follow up, and I'm usually the one who pushes other people than the one who needs to be pushed, so.
Hilaria, what would you, and what would you like to see a committee like this, or this particular committee accomplish ultimately?
First of all, I'd like it to show that this is a priority here in Northborough, that we respect all human beings equally, and that that's, you know, that our community is changing. There is more diversity now than there was certainly 50 years ago, probably even 10 years ago, and I just want to make sure that they're represented, and they're probably not represented on, on the regular committees, and this would be a great way for us to learn from them and learn how can we make all of our town, you know, safer and more inclusive and more respectful of people from diverse backgrounds. And I think a lot of, we have a lot of learning to do, and I think if we, as the, we as that committee could encourage that learning to happen in a positive way and see it as an opportunity. It's a beautiful thing, diversity, you know, it's not something that, oh, you know, we have to deal with, it's something that we're blessed to deal with or fortunate to deal with, and I would just like, you know, to see a little bit of more enthusiasm about that, and joy about that, and openness for what we can learn from each other.
Yeah.
Including also, certainly, I mean, I would like to see some, you know, changes, like name changes, for example, you know, Columbus Day was just yesterday, and many towns are changing that to Indigenous people's day. So, that's just one example of, I think, important steps that can happen to send a message that, yes, we value all parts of American history and American culture.
Yeah, getting back to organizational skills, too, you know, because this committee is really the first of its kind, is just starting out, and it's not as structured yet, do you envision that you, or do you perceive that you have good organizational skills in terms of being able to do information gathering, reaching out to different groups of people, keeping the information organized for ultimate presentation out there toward the, toward the goals that you hope to accomplish? Do you feel that that's a strength of yours?
I do. That's what I do in my job a lot, you know, gathering information and presenting it to others, or encouraging others to, you know, do their part of it as well, summarizing things, making them accessible, making them understandable, yeah, I think, I think those are my strengths.
Anything else about your background? Tell us a little teeny bit more about yourself.
What do you want to know? I mean, I could talk for a long time.
Did you have any specific?
I'm sorry, Leslie, what was it?
I'm sorry, Leslie, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. Tim?
I lost my train. Oh, did you have any specific questions for us on anything? You know, this is, I want to make sure that Leslie mentioned before that, that, that you get any information that you may, may need, so that you're, in the interview with, with, without any questions.
I mean, I'm honored to, you know, be considered, and since it's a new committee, I wasn't expecting you to have a whole lot of information for me, and so, I trust that should I be, you know, chosen to be on the committee, then we'll figure it out together, and if not, I will be confident and happy that a good committee has been formed.
Perfect, thank you for that. Leslie, did you have any other questions?
No, unless there's anything else you'd like to add about yourself.
Like, I think I said it all in my resume, I'm very passionate about peace and justice, and I'm very well-versed in multicultural contexts, that's one of my passions, and I'm happy to share it.
Wonderful. Yeah, your application's excellent, we appreciate it. Thank you very much for applying and taking the time to, to interview with us, we very much appreciate it. We wish we had longer than 10 minutes, but that's the standard time period for all the interviews we do for any committee, and it goes fast.
It does, yeah. Well, and I know you have a full agenda tonight, so.
Yes, after for the next three weeks, including this week, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was nice meeting you.
You too.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Take care.
Would you like me to bring the next one in?
Sure. Hi, George.
Hi.
How are you? Leslie Rutan?
George, Tim Kalin.
How are you, Tim?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it. Thank you for applying for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
Well, I must admit, this is my first-ever Zoom interview.
Oh, isn't it excellent so far? Isn't it excellent so far?
Well, hey, so far, for 30 seconds, not bad.
Exactly. I think it's gonna be a way of the future for a bit. So, we wanted to find out some things about you, find out why you applied for this particular position, and if you could tell us about yourself and what you feel you have to land to a committee like this.
Okay, well, that's a relatively tall order, I guess, but, let's see, why I applied for it? Well, I, I read about it, I've been watching this since, I think, Tim, you first proposed the idea of doing something about this back in June, roughly, when you first presented this.
Yes.
And one of the things that always concerns me when things happen, like, is all the issues of what we've been going through since June have to end up being more than just a gathering on the green and lawn signs, and it seemed to me like actually setting up this committee is, is actually the point, we're actually saying, are we really going to kind of change things, or really gonna try and do something a little different than what we've done before? And it, it's- And it, it's through things like this where you really affect change. Because uh, you know, the signs are great, but then they go away. And if that's as far as we go, nothing's gonna happen. And real change comes slowly and it comes through incremental work. And it, you you know, as you've kind of lined out, you've got about a year roughly from when this committee starts. And it's gonna take that long, because this, you know, this is, this is hard work. So I kind of looked at that and said, listen, you know, I I I like to see, you know, things that are really positive. I'm I'm not somebody who would necessarily go to a demonstration. I did not go to the green when we had the Black Lives Matter thing at the at the town comment. But I do think it's something worth doing something about and doing something really concrete. And I thought this was an opportunity to do that. So I I guess that's the reason I I applied. As far as background of whether I would be useful or not, uh, you know, thi- this is one of those things where uh, it really depends and it really depends on what you're looking for. I I think I would be useful because I'm willing to put in the time and the effort to actually uh, work on this. I actually have some experience with this, not a lot. But uh, I facilitate a um, a course, an annual course that's run through the Society of Information Management. And the point of that course is to teach leadership principles to future information technology leaders. And I've been doing that since about uh, twenty fifteen. I actually took the course back in nineteen ninety-two. And then when they offered me an opportunity to be one of their facilitators, I jumped at it. Uh, and one of the things that we have been, my, the uh, this particular program has uh, chapters offered all over the country. So there's uh, there's, you know, a New England off, there's a Boston offering, there's a Hartford offering. Uh, I actually work in the Mid-Atlantic offering, which is outside of Philadelphia, uh, mainly because that's where I used to live and that's where I took the course. But uh, we have a bunch of those. And my co-facilitator at the uh, at the Philadelphia group, we call it the the uh, Regional Leadership Forum. And uh, my co-facilitator and I thought that uh, addressing diversity inclusion is something that's very, very important. So in addition to our regular program, we've actually been working to put together a a day and a half seminar of uh, dealing, taking what we call a deep dive into diversity and inclusion for uh, IT leaders. And so I guess I could say I have some experience in terms of uh, dealing with this in kind of in the corporate space. Uh, clearly not a lot. I mean, I I uh, you know, my background is uh, you know, I I have a PhD in biochemistry, but that really doesn't help you in anything with this. But I, again, I've been doing a lot of reading in this area and uh, I've been doing a lot of discussion and that kind of thing. So I think I I have some experience with it that I could be helpful. Uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I am, you know, I'm the perfect person to do this at all.
Well, you make a nice statement, though, in terms of your background, which I think um, is important. Um, the fact that you've been a scout master.
Oh, yeah.
Troops forever, for a long time. I know that for a fact, because I know that a lot of Eagle Scouts have come out of your troop and have done some sensational product projects. And I know that's a lot of work on your part as well. Um, and you say here that you foster diversity among your scouts. So I think, you know, all those areas that that you've touched in town are a part of your background too, so.
That's true. I didn't, I didn't mention that, but we have a very eclectic troop. I I have a lot of nationalities, a lot of religions in the troop. Uh, we've been, over the past couple of years, uh, uh, we have been waiting for national Boy Scouts to catch up with us in terms of uh, sexual orientation, et cetera. And they finally have, uh, but, which is nice to see. But yeah, we we've been pretty much, and I I also uh, was instrumental in starting a girls scout troop in town. So.
I know that.
Yeah, we have three scout troops. We have, you know, Troop One and Troop One-O-One.
Right.
And then Troop Eight-Twenty-Three, uh, which uh, is in its second year and actually has about ten girls now, eleven girls, so.
Is that considered, what, is that considered girls or Boy Scouts?
It's considered Boy Scouts.
Okay.
There's a little bit of tension going on right now between those two groups. Uh, but uh, uh, basically, uh, I think the Boy Scouts of America realized that, uh, geez, I mean, there were only a handful of countries all over the world that didn't have both boys and girls in it. The United States, Saudi Arabia, Pakistan, et cetera. And I think the United States finally realized that, listen, if the program is valuable, it's valuable to everyone. And uh, they introduced it over the last couple of years. Uh, two years ago, they introduced it into Cub Scouts. And then last year, they introduced it into Boy Scouts. And uh, uh, you know, hopefully, we can kind of get around the 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 organization, the bureaucratic politics of it and just recognize that we're we're offering a program that's valuable to all of our youth.
Mm-hmm. That's fantastic. In the old days, we did Explorers. That was co-ed.
Yeah, yeah. And 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 BSA used a lot of their experience with Explorers on how to set up the programs so that, you know, it wasn't like it was, we've never considered it before. But why were we holding back and why were we not kind of offering?
That is true. That's terrific to hear that. Um, do you have any other questions of us? Is there anything else you would like to add in terms of uh, background or your interest in this particular committee, the way the committee will be set up or anything like that?
Well, uh, I I'm interested to see how, you know, part of it is uh, it was unclear from reading the the charge, which, you know, by definition, those things have to be kind of a little broad and kind of cover things. But uh, if either of you could shed some uh, thoughts on what you would think would be some of the concrete goals you'd like to see accomplished over this, uh, are there particular things that we would like to address that we, you know, that would, oh, maybe set Northborough in the forefront of dealing with these kinds of issues or uh, uh, particular areas where we should dig into and see if we could im- improve things? I, you you know, in other words, this can be very broad, but then you can get down, you can say, here's a couple of specific areas where we want to dig into and see if we can make some recommendations to improve.
Yeah, I think um, you know, one of the, one of the 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 challenges with the with the committee is is it's a new committee. So there's no historical um, information to reference back to. Like, we've got, you know, a a clean slate going forward. So um, I think your question is probably going to be on the agenda for the first meeting. Because, you know, as as a, as a person on the, on the, on the Board of Selectmen, I can certainly say, these are the things that we're gonna do, but that's not my role in this this committee at all. You know, it's really important that we get people with different perspectives um, from town um, have had different experiences in town and hear what's important to those members of of different aspects of the community. You hear what they want to accomplish. You hear that they they want to take on. You know, there's some higher level things. Adding some diversities to to some of the town departments, I think, is important. Um, but is that gonna be the only thing this committee accomplishes? I don't think so. Um, what other things that we want to take on? Again, I think that's gonna be a topic of discussion once, once we we get all the members of the community together and and see what what we want to take on.
Because, you know, when you think about it, there's uh, you know, as you mentioned, one, one, one objective or one kind of thing of saying, is there a way to make our uh, our town? You know, our town governance and our town uh, departments more diverse. And then you can say, well, should should they reflect the? I started to think about it and say, can we make the town departments reflect the diversity of the town? But then when you think about it, Northborough is not quite that diverse. And is one of the objectives, maybe, is there a way that we can make the town itself such that the the resident population of the town is more diverse than it is now? So that, you you know, and I, I, I kind of recognize that. And and maybe it's unfair to ask that question, because a brand-new committee's gotta go through the whole, you know, forming, storming, norming, to get to performing. And we're gonna have to go through that to start it off. And that, it's to be expected, it's gonna take a little bit to kind of get that going.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, unless you have anything else to add, we we probably need to move on to the next applicant. We're trying, trying very hard to keep it to ten minutes. It's very difficult, because ten minutes flies, but that's our standard amount of time for all interviews that we do for all committees, so. We thank you very much for applying.
Okay.
Taking the time and thinking about this and uh, putting forth your name. So we have this week of interviews, next week and the week after, so it'll be a bit before we um, make the appointments.
Yeah, okay.
But thank you very much, George. We appreciate it.
Thank you, George. Very nice meeting you.
All right. Talk to you later.
Nice to see you. Take care.
Ready for the next?
Ready for the next, sure.
Okay, she's in as Krista, but her name's Mary. I'm gonna fix it as soon as I bring her in.
Yes, okay. You're on mute. Oh, good. Change it to Mary. You're on mute, Mary. All right, yeah, there you go. Hi, Mary, how are you? Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen, Tim Kaelin.
Hi, Leslie.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Tim. Thank you for having me.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thanks for for applying.
You're welcome.
It's great. We got it. We got a uh, much bigger turnout in applications than we were anticipating, which is great. So thank you for for taking the time to to apply. I guess first, do you want to just um, talk about um, your background and what you think you can bring to to the committee?
Sure. Uh, well, I'm currently a Realtor. I've been a Realtor since two thousand and nine. And I worked for Coldwell Banker. Prior to that, I was with Lexus of Northborough for thirteen years. I did quite a bit of managing the training throughout the the dealership with all of our associates. Um, and that included diversity training. So we actually found ourselves in a situation, we really needed to address a problem. Um, and we took it to the next level and we embraced it. And I haven't been there. I left four years ago, but I'm certain that they're still continuing those um, positive moves forward. Um, and when my kids were little, they're now uh, in college, but when they were little, I was very involved with the schools, with PTOs. Um, I was on the Proctor School Council and brought some fresh ideas to the table while I was there, working really closely with Margaret Donahoe at the time. So I just feel, after being in Northborough for twenty years, that I have a lot of um, ideas that I can share. I have a lot of experience with the community and with my own personal diversity training. Hopefully, that I can bring another level of uh, expertise. So I'm not an expert, but just some information that we might not already have.
No, that's great. That's great. It's um, every bit of uh, experience helps. I think that's, you know, it's, I've been saying, it's it's an important part of this committee is gonna be the the experience and different perspectives that each each member of the committee um, brings. So it's 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 important. When you think about um, the committee, is there anything that you would like to see the committee accomplish?
Yeah, so I feel that the greatest place to kind of focus early efforts would be within the schools. Um, I grew up in Wayland, and in Wayland, we were, I wouldn't necessarily say immersed in diversity, but through the MECO program, we had the opportunity to go to school with kids and learned kind of firsthand what it was like to have a classmate and a friend who was of a different background, a different color, a different culture. And when I look at our own schools and I look at all of our neighboring towns and the schools, we really don't see that. And I know that there are a lot of committees that are coming together in all of our surrounding communities, which is great. I saw Westboro and Shrewsbury and Westford, and everybody's doing such a making those positive steps forward to improve awareness. And um, I think it really starts with, at the, you know, kindergarten level, even before that. I mean, kids are beginning to form opinions of others at the age of three. And if we can start at our elementary schools and and have cultural activities, and we have some, but it would be so wonderful, especially as a Realtor. I work with many different cultures and sometimes they don't come to Northborough because they don't see the diversity. And you know, they're going to the websites, they're going to the schools, they're going to the town, they're going to Facebook pages. And we don't have that yet, but we surely can, you know? And I just think that the change kind of starts with with our our kids. And we've got, you know, thirty percent of the homes in Northborough have children. And I think that's a great place to start.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's an interesting point about about people looking to move into town and and not seeing the diversity that they want to see. And it's, I don't wanna say a roadblock, but it's something for people to consider when when they're they're buying, buying their home. It's a little tough to hear, but that's good. It's part of the.
But it can change and it can improve. And we're not alone. And and, you know, I I've been on many different town school websites. And we're, we're with everybody else, unfortunately. The the only school that I could find was Wayland. Um, but again, they've been doing this for decades through the MECO program. We in Northborough, obviously, that's not something that we would probably even think about. But a great place to start would be, I think, at the elementary school level and work ourselves up. I mean, certainly, Algonquin was great. The two seniors that put together the protest on that day in June, and they gathered four hundred students or family members. I mean, it's, it's an important, um, it's 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 important. It's a priority for people today. And and we want to see that cultural awareness, but it certainly would be great for people who aren't from our community to feel that it's more welcoming. And when they go to these websites, they see, whether it's a circle of the colored hands, and they they see that unity, right, of cultures.
Yes.
And and they fail, feel like I can fit in, even if I'm only three percent. If I feel like it's a priority to the people in Northborough, then I want to be there. I want to be part of that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's a very good point. Did you have any questions for us on on the committee or the process or just anything in general?
Really, um, I was so pleased to see that Northborough was doing this. And um, regardless who of who ends up on the committee, I think it's just such an awesome, wonderful thing that you're doing. And I'm I'm proud to be a resident here. Um, I don't have any questions. I think um, it's so new right now that I don't, I don't, I don't really have any questions just at the moment.
That's a, that's one thing to, you know, it's, it's, the committee is new. Um, so there's no, there's no track record. Um, there's no foundation. There's nothing to 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 kind of lead us going forward. That once we get, put the committee together, we're gonna have to kind of, you know, we are gonna be starting with a blank, blank slate. So I think it's gonna be very important for the members of the the committee to be able to 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 work together, to be a good team. And also be flexible at the same time, because we're we're gonna be kind of going through this and and seeing where it leads us as we go. Um, so you're, are you comfortable working um, and being part of a committee that kind of has that, that flexibility?
Absolutely, absolutely. I um, I started, I don't know if you're familiar with Neighbor Brigade, but I'm a chapter leader for the Northborough-Southborough Neighbor Brigade. So we started at the very bottom, starting a mission. I didn't start it, my sister did. But um, but, you know, from the ground up, so we really didn't know what to, what we were getting ourselves into. But it was a, it was a mission, a mission that we were doing. And then similar to this, where we're starting with no track record. Um, it's certainly so great to look around to these neighboring communities. And I found this organization in Massachusetts called the Diversity and Inclusion for Community Empowerment. Have you seen that?
No, I haven't.
It just was founded in two thousand and nineteen. They go by the acronym. Just was founded in 2019. They go by the acronym DICE. And they're a network of individuals and community groups committed to promoting diversity and inclusion in local cities and towns. And that is just so perfect because clearly it's become such a big priority. You know, sadly, with all these, you know, recent deaths and unfortunate situations, but, but it's, it's even bigger than that. I mean, it's just, even if those things didn't exist, if we didn't have George Floyd's terrible death and all these other things, it's still so important. I mean, I've been a Realtor for several years and it, it's always a question. How many, let's just say, how many Indians do you have in the community and where are the temples and? You know, what are the ratios and whether they're black or brown, whatever it is. We can do better. We can do better and we, we can become welcoming and in fact, my daughter's boyfriend was visiting us over the summer and he's from Ghana. And it was maybe two weeks before I got the email from the town and, and he had come, he stayed for a couple of weeks over the summer. And um. Right before he left to go to school, he just said, you know, I was kind of disappointed because I feel like I'm alone. And I don't see any diversity within the community. And I just said to my daughter, I'm like, we need to change that. Like what can we do as a family within our community to help make it better and more, more inclusive?
And that's the beauty of this committee, I think, the fact that it is a blank slate, you know, in terms of the structure and the goals that you want to set. And how you ultimately see this committee making an impact in Northborough. I think it's actually a really cool opportunity.
It really is.
It's not predetermined. The goals aren't predetermined. I mean, they're, they're going to be general goals that people want to accomplish. I think the kind of people that apply for this have wonderful goals in mind. But it will be nice for the committee to determine those ultimately. As you go along, so I think that's great. Do you have anything else you would like to add? We hate to make it too short, but we have a couple of the applicants tonight and next week and the week after as well. So I didn't know if you have anything else you'd like to add before we part ways.
I don't. I know you're busy. I appreciate your time and I thank you for having me.
Well, thank you.
Tim?
Thank you very much for, for, for taking the time to apply. It's very much appreciated.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I appreciate the consideration.
Okay, thank you so much, Mary.
Leslie, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mary.
Yep, bye bye.
Bye bye.
You guys good or you need a couple of minutes? I got another one in their waiting room.
Maryam? I think.
Yep, she's there if you guys are ready.
Okay. I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Should be on her way. There she is.
Hi.
Hi. Is it pronounced Maryam?
Yes, it is.
Maryam, okay, hi. Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen.
And Tim Callen, Board of Selectmen, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Same, likewise.
Thank you for waiting. We're running a little behind schedule.
Of course, no problem.
We keep all, we try to keep all of our interviews to 10 minutes, generally speaking, for all committee interviews, regardless of the committee, but it flies by, so. It's hard to keep to that.
That's okay.
So, um, if you would like to tell us about yourself and why you have applied for this and what you feel you could contribute to this committee.
Sure, um, so I am a sophomore at Simmons University. I'm studying Political Science and International Relations. I grew up in Northborough and graduated Algonquin in 2019. This past summer, I started an organization with my peers in Northborough called Vote Northborough, which was an effort to engage young voters to become more involved in local politics and just learn more about what goes on in the town as well as the state government. We also launched a town newspaper, which is youth, well, it's created by the youth for the town. So we're working on that. In terms of why I'm interested in this committee. I think I bring a unique experience and perspective as both a youth in town of Northborough as well as a Muslim American growing up in this town. I really wanted to apply to this committee in order to continue to engage young voters and the youth in this town. Allow them to have a voice and feel like they are being heard. I think a lot of the youth in this town don't know what's going on or don't even know that a committee like this might exist. So, um. Yeah, I'm hoping to do that.
The one thing that sticks out too is to actually just the, the committee meeting, which is kind of the reality of this, with you being a college student. On the other hand, who knows how long, I assume you're working remotely?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that could continue for a while, which means that you are available in general. I wanted to kind of get that.
Yes, yes, I wouldn't, I'm almost confident that it's going to be remote next semester as well, so I'll be home for a while.
Okay, okay. And um. How do you feel? Do you feel you would have a lot of perspective, having been a student at Algonquin? As a Muslim and, and I don't know about all the groups over there, my three kids graduated from there. But I, of course, I didn't hear a whole lot about what they did during the day, but I know something about some of the clubs and organizations there. But do, do you feel that as a student there that you either not necessarily experienced things, but that you have information about clubs, committees, what you had access to, whether or not you were heard, that kind of thing?
Sure, um, so I also wrote for, I was an editor for The Harbinger, which is our school newspaper. And so I was able to kind of navigate through the school and interview different people, get different perspectives as well. So I do feel as though answer your question, I feel like there are a lot of different voices at Algonquin, but sometimes certain students do feel like their voices aren't exactly important to the administration. Sometimes I did, did experience some students having certain experiences that were maybe sometimes pushed under the rug, not from deliberate, not deliberately by the administration, but just from naivety or a lack of knowledge about what was maybe going on with the student body. Yeah.
That's actually a very good point that you raised. That there can be a naivete or people doing things unconsciously. And it really is brought to the forefront as a conscious, as a, as, as, as an issue, so that people aren't naive about it. They know what they're saying, what they're doing, what the impact on others is, so.
Right.
That's a great perspective. It's a great perspective. Do you have any other questions about this committee or is there anything else that you would like to tell us about yourself that you feel you would be able to lend in terms of, with it being a new committee, there could be needing organizational skills too, because there will be a lot of reaching out and organizing of information and so forth.
Sure, um, I mean, in terms of organizational skills, I think I am a good asset to that. I have had several leadership services both at college and high school in the community. Just this past summer, I've been able to be a part of two committees for State Rep, so Campaign, sorry, campaigns for State Rep and that's been really wonderful. I've been able to engage with voters as well as people of the Worcester County community and, yeah.
And I, I know you attended town meeting.
Yeah, I did.
I know you did. I, I think that's great. I think that's super because that's not something I think commonly done by people in your age group and I think that that's wonderful that you're showing an interest in your community like that. That's wonderful. Any other questions or concerns or Tim, is there anything else you wanted to?
If I could just ask one question. When you, when you think about the, the committee, it's a new committee. You know, we don't, we don't have a, a track record or, or the history to, or foundation to build off of. But when you think about the committee, if you were to serve on the committee, is there anything that you would like to see the committee accomplish?
I would love to see the committee engage in important conversations in the town. Whether that is open forums, I, I know that the town has town committee, but I, I think it can sometimes be nerve wracking for residents to speak up at town meetings, so I would love more of maybe a casual setting for anybody to share their concerns. Maybe just create a safe space for residents of this town to be able to say that they perhaps feel concerned about their safety or their lack of representation per se.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's a great point. It's, I think it's it's going to be important for, for the committee to hear experiences from residents in the, in the town, you know, it's, it's not you know, part of Leslie and I's job is to make sure that, that the people that, that get picked for the committee are diverse group with, with different perspectives, but to your point, it's also important to hear from people that aren't on the committee. From around the community, to give them space to, to share those experiences, because oftentimes those are, those are the spark for tough conversations.
Right.
Well, I think we'll need to end the interview. We need to move on. We have another interview and then we have six more interviews next week and six more interviews the week after that. So push our schedule back a little bit, because we had a lot of interest, which was awesome. I think that was great, so. At any rate, we won't be making any kind of appointments for another few weeks, so. I want to thank you very much for applying and thank you very much for all the things that you have done and that I know you continue to do. And we'll see what happens in terms of.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Alrighty then, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Hey guys, it's going to be just a couple of minutes till our last one comes in. Di has been, Di has been letting them know we're a few minutes behind. So she asked the last one to come in at, at 10 after, so it'll be just a couple of minutes. But we are still streaming and we are still recording.
Okay.
I gotta tell you, I'm really excited that people had some really excellent points.
Yes.
Like some very
Well thought out points, yeah. Absolutely. Love it.
Okay, folks, our last one is here. I'm going to go ahead and let her in, alright?
Hi, how you doing? You're on mute. Oh, there you go. How you doing?
Good, how about you?
I am good. Before I make a mess of it, can you just pronounce your first name? I can guess if you want, but.
It's Michaela.
Michaela, okay, that's what I was going to say, but.
Yeah.
Amen, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
阮，Tim Callen as well.
Hi.
My, my name's Tim and people make a mess out of that, so.
Depending what kind of mood they're in.
I get, I get Ken all the time and I.
Oh, I guess maybe they look at the K and read it fast and say Ken.
I don't know.
I get a lot of Michaels, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you very much for applying. I, I very much appreciate everybody that's, that's taken the time to, to fill out applications and send those in. We got a much greater turnout of applications than we, than we thought we would, which is, which is great. So if you just want to talk a little bit about both and what you think you'd bring to the committee?
Sure, so, um, I am a fairly new resident of Northborough, but I have lived in Central Mass for most of my life outside of college. So I work at State Street, a financial institution as a project manager. And I work in HR, so I work on a lot of diversity and inclusion initiatives. So I think, you know, it's the corporate world, but it's, you know, similar themes, similar topics. So I think that would be a really helpful thing that I could bring my knowledge to state, to the town of Northborough. And then also just as a project manager, I'm really comfortable leading, you know, large scale initiatives, small scale initiatives. And communicating, I know it said on the posting that there would be a lot of like reporting to, to you, the Board of Selectmen. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable public speaking and communicating and reporting, so that would be good there. And I've always just, I, like, as I said, I've worked in HR for the past five, six years on diversity inclusion, so it's something that I have a passion for and I'm interested in. So I think my experience would, would lend itself to the committee.
Yeah, that's great. It's, it's, it's important that the experience is, is is an important part of, of the committee in addition to the experiences that people have had in their, their lives in, in town and in, in the surrounding community. So I think that's that's, that's important. When you think about the committee, is there anything that you would like to see the committee accomplish?
So I think it would be a question first of if you see the committee as more policy driven, like really there's just looking at policies that way, or if you see it more community engagement, involvement. Because I think, you know, from the, from the get go, I think if, if we understand, you know, what exactly we're tasked to do, we can have a clearly defined, you know, charter and goals. One thing that I thought would be a good idea is to have maybe like a student ambassador from, I know Algonquin's Northborough and Southborough, but kind of engaging, you know, people, you know, middle school, high school age who want to be involved in the community, because I feel like that's a really good, a good way we can get people engaged. I think there's a lot of, you know, quick wins we can do that are more you know, like an open to all, committed to diversity pledge to kind of get visibility to start. And then I think from there, we can maybe gauge what people in the community want, you know, listening sessions, surveys, you know, small groups to see where people are at, what they're thinking and get ideas there and then we can maybe firm up like what our, what our goals would be, short term, long term.
Yeah. No, that's great. That's, it's it's one of the, the, the challenges with the, the committee. It's also one of the great aspects of it is, is it's a new committee, so there's no, there's no track record. We're starting with, with a great aspects of it is, is it's a new committee. So there's no, there's no track record. We're starting with, with a, with a clean slate. So, we can build the framework as, as we go. And I think it's, as we add people to the, the committee, it's going to be, important that all the committee members can, can work together. And, and be comfortable with some flexibility around what we're trying to, to accomplish. I'm sure as a, as a project manager, you've probably seen, you know, it's similar to a project. We've got to begin an end date. And so I would assume that you'd be, comfortable working in, in, on that sort of committee.
Yeah, definitely is something I have for sure the soft skills for, you know, defining the scope, what we want to do, setting goals. And then seeing it through, through the execution phase.
Yeah.
Definitely in my wheelhouse.
How are your organizational skills? I could see this being a, a big, potentially a big information gathering committee, depending on how many people are spoken to, groups that are met with and so forth.
Right. Um, I'm great. I think any, every project manager has their different way of doing things, but, um, I'm very organized. I'm a big Excel person. Um, we use Excel and then Tableau. So I'm big on, you know, spreadsheets and organizing. And then I love seeing how data tells a story, which I think would be a, a big part of this at the beginning, would be a big, you know, information gathering exercise. And then from there, we can kind of see what we can do. So, um, I love lists. I have probably five to do lists at any time, you know, short term, long term, personal work. So, um, very organized. I think my husband hates it, but.
Yeah, I, I have a list of, of 19 people that applied for the diversity and inclusion committee. So that's, that's the big list I'm working on.
So that's excellent with organization. I think that that's critical, you know, and I like your idea too of, uh, surveys and things that might be interesting thing to, to do with the community. Their Survey Monkey or something where people are asked some basic things.
Yeah.
Their perception.
And I think it'd be really great to do it at the very beginning, at the very onset of the, of the committee. And then maybe things, pulse checks as we go, a number of questions on what, how inclusive people think Northborough is, what we can do better. And then right at the beginning and then, you know, you know, every three months, every six months, um, to see how those numbers change. I think that'd be really interesting.
That would be very interesting, actually. You're right. I do agree with that statement too, in terms of doing it at the beginning as opposed to gathering information and then finding out how people might be feeling about things.
Yeah.
That's the first thing in terms of information gathering. That's excellent. Do you have any other questions about the committee itself? I don't know. One thing that we don't know about the applicants so far is what their availability is. And it's hard to, to talk about and ask people. Really to get down into that kind of details because the committee hasn't really been set up yet. And a meeting date, meeting dates and right day of the week and time and so forth.
Right.
So hopefully the people who were selected are actually able to meet on the date that works best. So, um, that's, that's kind of not overly informational, but that's why we're not really getting down into that kind of detail.
Yeah. Um, I'm pretty flexible with, I think, most people with COVID, I'm home, working from home 100% until at least February right now is their timeline. So I'm home and my calendar is typically pretty flexible. Evenings, obviously like anybody who works a nine to five would be better, but I can make, um, really any time work. I'm, I'm pretty, pretty flexible scheduling.
Great.
Excellent. Do you have any other questions of us or of what, what you, I don't want you to, to walk away wondering what's happened?
No. Um, so I think it's great that there's so many people. And so I, I was thinking, you know, even if for some reason, if I wasn't picked, I'm sure there's still opportunities to be engaged and, and, um, you know, help. I don't know if this is going to be any like event based, if there's a budget, or if we're more going to focus at the beginning policy type things and see what we can do there, like the quick wins first.
Now I think the committee will determine that ultimately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions at all for us?
Um, no questions right now. I, I think, um, you know, I'm excited to potentially get involved and, and help serve the community. So all exciting stuff.
Excellent.
Right. Well, we've got, um, we're two more weeks of interviews.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably, or our goal is to be letting people know, um, end of October, beginning of November.
Sure.
Appointment would be made at our first meeting in November, I think. Is it November?
Yes. Yeah.
November 9th. Yeah. So in about a month is when we give appointments at our meeting. So we would, we would know by then. So, so thank you very much.
Yeah, no.
Thank you for taking the time to interview with us. We really appreciate it.
Yes. No, thank you. Yeah. Good luck with, uh, the rest of the interviews and, and everything.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Alright. Have a good one.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. When you guys are ready, I can stop the recording and stop the streaming if you're all set or if you want to.
We're all set because we're not voting on anything else this evening and we're not making any appointments this evening or anything like that. So I think we're done for the evening.
Excellent. I'll take.